The city council committee of a whole meeting for Tuesday, July 20th. I'd like to call this meeting in order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present except for Councilman Burgley. He's a little under the weather and will not be here this evening. Any public comment at this time? And then at this time, then do I have a motion to adopt? Wait, I'm on the wrong one here. We don't have any motions here. This is a committee of a whole. We all get to talk. Let's go on to E1, police updates, Chief Myers.
Alright, Mayor Council, just the biggest update we have is we are at full staff with our last full-time hire who is in field training right now as we speak. I'm assuming sometime next month he'll be out on his own controlling. So he'll be up to our full staff plus that. That grant, that was the grant position. Our charger showed up today. So that was ordered in January. It's how long it takes to get him. So we'll see when that gets out. I'm assuming four weeks would be optimistic. Might take a little longer on the graphic package, but we might have it out there in about four weeks. Council requested speed sign, you know, we purchased speed sign, we've had it up a couple of times. We just took it down yesterday off of Third. So I'm working with the vendor a little bit just because we had some issues with the data extraction. So it's operational and we're just working on the things out. I worked with Sylvester, I'm getting some mounting brackets put up on different places. So it's been up on two different places so far as on South Passage. Maybe four weeks ago and then we set up on Third north of I say Parkway for the last two weeks. So battery life is about two weeks. So went fourteen days on this last charge. Good to know. See our officers just worked the rodeo and jubilee days. The street dances, our officers, we're gonna have two officers assigned to street dances at least for the rest of this year. Then we have all our officers are, as far as their training, I know I updated you on the training stuff. Our officers have completed their instructor training. So we are set to go as far as our in-house training for all our post or state required mandated trainings throughout the year. So we'll work on that and they're setting those up for the rest of this year and next year. The only other last thing is like to mention the council is that August 3rd is Night to Unite. So obviously we're encouraging the community to host neighborhood block parties that we will make appearances at and meet with. As of now, we haven't really, usually they come pretty late, but we haven't got any yet. I know there's a few that are planning, we just haven't got the notifications on those. So if you as council members want to work your magic with your contacts and facilitate some of those neighborhood block parties on Night to Unite, we appreciate that as well.
I want to add one item on six. You and I've had that conversation carnival. I just want to have a discussion on it, that's all.
Okay. Let's go on to E2, TIF discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We just wanted to talk to you a little bit about, so have a TIF discussion with you, tax increment financing. We have been approached by a property owner on the east side of Highway 65. They own twenty-eight acres and they were asking if the city would be interested in purchasing that property. So that is something we can go to closed session and talk about, but I wanted to talk to you about this first before we even go down that path. So that property has a lot of issues. There's no utilities to it. You have to actually do some infrastructure, put some roads and there's a couple wetlands on it. Especially one of the, one of the main parts that would be an entrance has a wetland. And then also part of the gas line goes through that.
Which property is this?
So it's the twenty-eight acres right by Manoco Gas Station.
That's the one I wanted.
Yeah, the property that you're interested in now, there's, or that you've expressed your interest in. So there are a lot of issues with that. And if we were to buy that, then we would have to take on those issues and those expenses to develop that. So I was talking with finance director and we were talking about, well, what if we could maybe create a TIF district for that area? Now, we can't do them ahead of time. You actually have to have a project in place to do that. But that's something to consider and I would like to discuss that with you tonight for this property. Mr. Wrecker has a couple other things he'd like to talk about, also some other properties, just to get us thinking about it and what your thoughts are on that. And then I can relay that back to the realtor for this property because I told her we would have this discussion. That way if we do say yes, we're on board for that, then she could advertise it as incentives for a restaurant, incentives for whatever. You know, the city is involved, the city will pay for the, you know, the infrastructure, tax payment, tax increment financing, all of those things. Then she could advertise for those things. But if that is not the way you want to go on that and you would like to actually discuss purchasing that, then we would have to go to closed session for that.
Is that where that road ends and the property is just beyond that?
Yes, but there's not actually a road. So it's, I know everybody knows.
That street there is not owned by the city, correct?
Correct, and there's not actually a road there. You know, people had thought along, along the Manoco Gas Station that that's supposed to be a road, but it's not. It's just a driveway. Whether there's an easement somewhere, there could be, but it's actually not right of way. So there's not even access that way. The only access would be by the church before you get to the cemetery right in there, but there's a wetland right there.
So who owns that road or that alley or whatever we're gonna call it?
If we're talking about someone's on Manoco's property, so they would own that, but it's not dedicated at all. So, and then to the north, there is an outlot that is supposed to be an access point, but that's also not dedicated. That's an outlot. Now, we do have a development agreement that says it's supposed to be a road, but it's not. So it's not developed, so. So that's another kind of puzzle, piece of the puzzle.
Why would the, why would they have ever put that? I mean, it's, looks like a road. curb and gutter, I mean, that's kinda what it looks like to me.
But it's.
Why would they ever put that in?
In all technicalities, it's not because it's not dedicated right of way. Whether that's what it's being used for, or maybe there's an easement between the properties.
Most likely Minco, Minico, whatever that is, that gas station. Most likely they did that and they probably owned that land at one point and they sold that property off. And it's just sitting there. That's my assumption.
Someone has to plow it in the winter.
They do.
They do.
They am, them and probably the church because that would be an inlet lot. So there's probably an agreement between.
Two properties.
The two property owners.
If you go down Eighth Avenue, there's intersections that actually have a four-way intersection that we're potentially supposed to go into that area. I mean, there's kinda like, what is it, Fourth and? What would be the first intersection you hit there? You know what I'm talking about, Jason, where you're going down Eighth Avenue and they put those, or Matt, you would know. Where you go down Eighth Avenue and they potentially built those four or three-way intersections and there's actually an entryway into the field?
There is one on the north side of Eighth where Kajma comes in.
Nope, it's in between Kajma and Five. There's like two intersections. There's cutouts, there we go, that's the word I'm looking for.
Yeah.
So there's cutouts.
Development went in there, they put the cutout in the curb.
So they were potentially supposed to connect somewhere in there. My mic's cutting out again. But yeah, I, I noticed that the first time we had this discussion. It was supposed to be something, but it got halted or whatever happened, I don't know. But I, I just, I'm still gonna stick to my.
That whole development was done way back, what? Fourteen? Even probably prior to that when I think it was Iverson started all that over there. So it probably goes way back and there's been probably multiple plan changes or ideas since then, so.
I know it was one of Don Lawrence's things that, on his way out, he emphasized to me that if the city bought that property and put those roads through there, boy, it would develop fast, but yeah.
Cause that's Highway 65 frontage for some of it.
Some of it is.
On the west side of that.
Yep, and the overlay, some of it is, yeah. So that kind of, with those challenges, I'm not really sure it's in the best interest of the city to purchase that because we would be taking on all of that. But if we could have them advertise as tax increment or, you know, that in support.
Let them do the work.
I think that'd be a lot easier for them and so Mike's gonna talk a little bit about that and then a couple of other lots that we thought maybe that might be.
I'd be for that.
Yeah, my assessment on that was is that the lot has, it's twenty-eight and a half acres and it's got some, some issues, right? Even that, there's the, where you would believe there is a road from the north coming down that you would think should be connected.
Right behind the Child Center there, yeah.
What is that, Sheila, that's actually an outlot? It's not even, yeah, it's not even dedicated right of way. So the point is, is there's a lot of issues. And if we were to buy it, we've simply taken on all those issues and all of those same issues still need to be addressed. In addition to everything we've already discussed, it's twenty-eight and a half acres. For a lot of developers, that's too much to take on in that location, right? There might be some real benefit to splitting that up into more palatable size. But either way, if we buy it, we take on all those same responsibilities. I think it makes a little more sense to be able to say, let's help the current owner address some of these issues to the extent that it's reasonable and feasible, including, you know, talking about incentives, whether or not there would be a TIF or an abatement opportunity there.
They weren't, wasn't it you and I, Josie, that we first met with those owners, the current owners? And they didn't seem too friendly.
I think they were, I think they were friendly, but I think that their perception of their ability to sell that property was stifled by the city not allowing businesses that they wanted to sell to in. So I'm, just from my recollection, it's been a while. I believe like one of them was like a storage unit place that wanted to come in, but that's not permitted in that zoning district. So I think that they felt that they wanted to sell it, but the city was kinda stifling that. So I think that's where they were coming from.
And that's, I mean, I understand their frustration, I guess we could say.
Yeah.
I mean, they started off very nice and then once we stifled that, then they got frustrated and.
Then they wanted a boatload of money for it.
Yeah. Then they got a little unfriendly by saying they wanted a boatload.
So personally, I don't, if, you know, if there's a way to do that with the TIF financing, I have no problem going that route. Let somebody else develop it and we'll help them every, which way we can without.
Taking the burden off.
Taking, you know, taking on that burden. I, I'm not against that idea. And that's, like you said, it's Highway 65 furnished property, you know, they got a lot of potential there. But I sure am not gonna be wanting to pay for any infrastructure.
If we didn't have so many other projects going on, maybe we might reconsider looking at that, but.
I, I still don't even wanna pay for the infrastructure. That's a lot of money.
But yeah, I mean, the longer it sits, maybe the quicker they're gonna wanna get rid of it.
That's my thought. I mean, it's. The quicker they'll wanna get rid of it.
I mean, they might have to lower their price.
What was that, three years ago now, Josie, we met with them?
Not even.
Not even, I.
Two?
At most it'd be two and a half because it was in 2019. I don't recall exactly when in 2019, I would probably say earlier on, but.
Yeah, I kinda sat there very quiet because I didn't know too much, so it was early in my seat. Josie did all the talking.
You'd best let her talk.
If I recall, I believe Don Lawrence was in there.
Oh, you're right, he was. You're, you're correct.
Not myself, as he was more familiar with that project and the ideas and ambitions of the city, what they wanted to see a developer do in that area. So he led that conversation, not myself.
You are correct, my apologies.
Yeah, I think when it comes to development, I think it moves the city to just be patient, right? The longer the, the longer it sits and the more development there is around it, the more incentive there is to develop it, right? And the more inherent value there is in developing it, the farther out in the future you go. So I think it moves us to be, to be patient. That's not to say that we can't help by offering TIF and a payment and some other options there. This does also then lead to secondary discussion that we started having as Sheila and I were starting going over the TIF is, we had previously brought up the idea that for the current liquor store, which will be exiting, basically will close the doors for the final time on November 17th, there would also be an opportunity for, for TIF there as well. The key there would be is that we'd need to be able to establish a redevelopment district. To do that, we would need the building official to identify code deficiencies that to be rectified would be more than, equal to or more than fifteen percent of the cost of building new on that site. And if we meet that threshold, we can simply declare redevelopment district and then whoever might sign a development agreement without that or a purchase agreement without that would be able to use ninety percent of that increment toward correcting those deficiencies. But that would be a determination that would need to be made by the building official. And if that's something the council would like to pursue, we can start down that road to make that determination if that's an option there. But that might be one way to garner some additional interest in that parcel.
I still wanna look at, I mean, I don't wanna jump on anything of that right now until we figure out we're doing that other property and whatnot. I think we need to, lack of better words, pull the reins in a little bit on that existing liquor store till we kinda come up with a solid plan.
Still doesn't hurt to put it for sale, sign up.
It, it doesn't hurt, but then what do you do if somebody comes in and offers they wanna buy it? Now we're forced into a situation that we can't do.
That's all negotiable though.
Exactly.
Nah, but then you turn around, you come in and, I come in and say, I wanna buy your property from you and you're all for it. And then all of a sudden, well, you tell me, no, I can't sell it to you, no.
That's nothing we'd say we can.
That's not, that's not something I wanna put us in that position.
That's why it'd be like a contingent sale.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I still, I think we need to, I think we nail, need to nail down the board first before we start cutting the next board. Is what I'm getting at. I, I, I don't want us to have to jump through hoops and deal with it. I think we should, we need to look at it as a big picture, as a future. I'm all for it if we can secure another property for the PD. I a hundred percent on board on that. I think it's got a lot of potential, but I think we still need, Plan A still needs to stay in effect until we can, and we can fast track the other portion if we have to, once they move out. But I think we need to just wait and see what we can do first.
To not have any kind of legal implications and it could be just as simple as a bias towards a business, we would wanna know for sure that we're gonna sell that building before we would post it for sale. At the, like I said, at the minimum, if we post it for sale and then we let offers come in, but we did deny them because we decided not to sell. It can look like we decided that we just didn't want that business in there and then we could be liable legally for that kind of decision that could come back to bite us.
Absolutely, and I don't wanna be that city, even, even then, they get mad at you and say, screw you, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna deal with City of St. Anthony, they're terrible. We don't, I don't want that perception. You know, I want us to look as a business-friendly tongue. I mean, we still got three years before we have to act on that liquor store. I agree, time is always an essence, but I think we still need to, we could, we could have that other situations resolved next week. But until that is set up in, in front of us, I don't think we need, I don't think we should do that right now. Cause we're gonna end up putting ourselves in a financial bind because then all of a sudden we're forced to have to find something and pay more than we really want to.
I agree with you, I think we should wait on that and just kinda see how the rest of it plays out, so.
I mean, I, I do agree, I think our other, other discussion we had for PD, I think that's a great idea. If we get the number, if, if we can get it to work. But I still think we need to hold off on that, selling, putting a for sale sign up right now. But we can still put in a plan to say, yes, we can make it a TIF project, we could do that. We can still do that, we just never have to act on it. I have no problem doing that, I just don't, I don't think we need to throw that for sale sign on. I don't, it's a tire I don't think we wanna kick because it might pop on us and then we're gonna be stuck in a situation that's not gonna be good. I mean, I don't like anybody telling me I'm gonna sell you something and then say, no, I decided not to. It makes me feel like I'm a piece of dirt or you're not somebody I wanna deal with.
Yeah, right. As far as the TIF, I've, I've never, I don't know how I feel about that actually. So tell me about that a little bit more in detail. I mean, it's ten years, right, is generally what it is or it can change from situation to situation or? Generally it's twenty-five, it's the sunset. Is it? And the basics of it works is that when you establish a TIF district, you're gonna set a baseline market value, right? Let's say we've got, let's say you've got a parcel, its baseline is a hundred thousand dollars. And then we're gonna do something to it, right? Whether it's redevelopment, new building, whatever the, the development is. Then from that baseline, you start looking at the increase in value. So let's just say we put up a building and it becomes two hundred thousand. Now the increment is that one hundred thou, that one hundred thousand difference, right? And we start collecting the taxes on that. And it's, and it's that appreciation in the tax base that is your increment. From that, city would keep ten percent for administration, right? To have created the district, to monitor the district, to do the reporting, to keep all the paperwork, all that stuff. The other ninety percent could, would then go back to, you know, potentially a bond issue related to that project. Or to the developer to rectify code deficiencies or to a developer to pay for infrastructure. I mean, there's a bunch of different ways that you can roll that out. Then you can have it simply sunset at the end of twenty-five years. Just let it, just let it go and just keep doing the math every year and sending out the checks. You can simply cap it, you can say twenty-five years or eighty-two thousand dollars, whatever comes first. You know, you could, you know, you could kinda get, for the most part, you get pretty flexible in those regards. But that's the basic gist of it is, is that it's that appreciation in the market value and that extra tax base that you pick up.
So they pay the tax on the original amount of the value all the way through, but that's the increase. So as they develop it and increase the value, they don't pay the tax on that for the, you know, whatever the terms are.
Well, it's, it gets paid, but then it gets run back around, right?
Okay, yeah, so they pay it and then they get, we take the ten percent to manage it and then they get the ninety percent back or however we decide.
We could have a scenario where Jimmy Gordon builds a building, pays cash out of his pocket and builds it. And that money, he would pay his taxes and then we would turn around and put that increment back and send it back to Jimmy afterward, right? But there could also be an issue where the, you know, we, and I've had this in prior employment where you might issue bonds to, to put together infrastructure on the site. And then you'd use that increment, that would still get paid, those taxes still get paid, but you'd take that ninety percent of the increment and you turn around and use that to make a bond payment. And I've had that work out and I've had that not work out. Sometimes you collect enough, sometimes you don't.
Right.
But that's kinda, there's different ways to do that.
Junction Bowl, when Mr. Waring built that, he got TIF money on it. And if he wouldn't have got it, it wouldn't be there today. It, it helped him immensely. And I mean, and, and he's happy where he's at. And it, it helped him immensely to bring it here. He could've just as well stayed where he was at. You know, so it brought, it brought in business.
Yeah, as a, as a general rule, as a general rule, you wanna use TIF in a but-for situation where development would not happen but for TIF being there. That's, that's, everything's a little more nuanced than that, but that is a general rule, that's a good way to think about it.
I think we're potentially throwing our, our line beaten, you know, bobbered in the water with the TIF and seeing what happens.
Well, I mean, you're not really, you're still collecting the tax that you're collecting now. You're, you're not necessarily subsidizing that, you're just incentivizing the, the development basically.
Yeah, a good way to think of it is, is if you have a blank lot, it's just land, you still, you still get that. That's still, that part of it just keeps going as it would normally.
Right.
But it's the new tax that was created because you put up two buildings or whatever. It's that new tax that starts to get circulated and parsed up.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm open to that, I guess, so.
So we're gonna pull in the reins on the current liquor store, wait for the appraisal, we'll do our other steps. And then, am I, do I understand on the twenty-eight and a half, we're, council seems to have an appetite to try to help rectify some of the issues that they have and Sheila and I can kinda work on. For, for the twenty-eight and a half acres, we would actually have to have a, it would be, I think the wording, I think the language is a, I forget if it's probable or likely project. It doesn't have to be like definitive, like you've signed paperwork. It doesn't have to be that, but there needs to be like a, a likely understanding or probability that Project X is going to happen in order to be able to establish that. So we did this just north of that parcel, actually, we did this for TIF District 11 preemptively on the hotel. We thought at one time it was reasonable, hotel was coming. We thought at one time it was reasonable that the, the hotel would be located kinda near where Flight Ship Bank is. And so there was a single parcel that was carved out as a TIF district for that purpose. We didn't end up using it. It's since been decertified and that money has gone back out to the, the different agencies to be redistributed. But yeah, you can, you can do that somewhat preemptively. But we have to have some reasonable expectation of a development and, and some understanding of what we expect that development to be. I mean, but this is the first step is to, you know, council to say, yes, we're willing to at least consider that. Then we, then we can add some incentive for any potential buyer.
I think it's only, it's only, it's only gonna make the city better, grow it if we did dip our toes in the water per se with them and, and help them. They, we'll help them and they help us by bringing business, you know? I, I, that's my personal opinion, so. Dan?
I'm in agreeance.
Yep.
I agree.
Jimmy, you're in agreeance on that twenty-eight acres, same thing?
Yeah, I don't have any interest in purchasing it as a city, but I think.
No.
District, I mean, I'd be hoping to open it, the zoning up a little bit too, but that's Highway 65 overlay stuff is.
Is a little bit too restrictive probably, but, but yeah, I'm all, I'm all for the TIF, that sounds good to me.
Okay, let's move on to E3, the American Rescue Funds Discussion.
So this is, we've got theoretically by the end of the month, we're gonna get American Relief Funds in the amount of roughly seven hundred thousand. And right now at this point, as staff, all I'm looking for is authorization to identify water and sewer infrastructure projects to utilize that money. And then the plan would be to, to identify those projects and queue them up in 2022. And if council's on board with that, then we'll.
I'm in favor of it.
Yep, I'll identify those and come back and make that clear.
I'm in favor.
Sounds good to me.
E4, the Archery Rage Discussion. Ms. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So continuing on the archery range discussion, you see in the memo, I have identified two places that we discussed in the last meeting. Option number one is the, sitting south of the dog park by that red shed. And option number two is within the compost site. So option number one, if you look at the map, you can see kind of the, the space that we have there. So that would account for, the space is about a hundred and seventy feet long by one hundred and forty feet wide, giving us about fourteen lanes to work with. Whereas over in the compost site, we are sitting at a hundred and sixty feet wide, a hundred and twenty foot long. We do have the ability to adjust that space if we wanted to kinda go forward with that option and, and use a little bit more of the compost site there. But that's just up to you guys what you wanna do with that. So really what we're looking at, material costs would be the same.
How long the lanes are you looking at?
Um, so it would depend on which we go towards. So I, with the option number one.
Did you say that already?
No, so it, it, we could determine that based on the length. But the max that we could go with option number one would be sixty yards. And option number two would depend if we wanted to go past that hundred and twenty foot distance, but that would sit, what about forty yards? So we're talking short distance range. With either of those options, we don't really have the, the space to go.
Yeah, but you're not gonna, most, most bow hunters aren't gonna sixty yards square shot with a bow.
Not typically because the brush is usually.
I was just gonna say, I don't know, I've known people to take hundred yard shots.
Well.
The bow is. For this area, sixty yards is pushing it.
If you're out hunting, I mean, sixty yards is probably, you wanna be ready for that, but, you know, if you're out west, but yeah, I'd say. So I mean, the, the longer lanes would be at, at the first option, right?
Yep, unless if we did wanna look at option two, we do have space there. It just depends on what we can take of the compost site.
You know, the, the dog park area is actually probably a little better area. So you're not, because if we're in the compost, that's locked when they're not operating. And this would give them more free rein to get in and out of there.
I think you're right.
Right.
Plus you have a parking location operating designated for that area, which is helpful. And you, yeah, you don't have any persons in the facility area that is.
And you, yeah, you don't have any, um, persons in the facility area that is, because it is, as you know, the compost site is open to the public works. So if you happen to have some loggers, they could get into the wastewater treatment area because that all is in that same enclosed area. There's no separation between the compost and that by a separate gate, so.
So you're, so you're looking at a total of about twenty-three thousand if you're by the dog park?
Um, if you put, yeah, if we put fencing or a backstop behind it. Um, otherwise materials, general materials for the range itself, for targets, all of that, uh, would be about forty-five hundred.
So you're only talking, you're only talking five thousand dollars difference between the two?
Yep.
I'll be honest with you, I, I think either direction we go, I, I, I'm on, I'm on board with either one. I, it's actually a lot less than I thought, so.
Is there a way?
Get her done.
For a backstop, is it possible for Public Works to build a berm with some like sweepings and fills we already have? Would save some money or not?
I would say we could, I would say we probably could build a berm. We do have some, you know, some sand there now that comes street sweepings.
So there is some there. I don't know if there'd be enough to do, you know, the whole thing or not, but.
I know you got enough to do, but I'm just, just thinking out loud.
I mean, you're, I mean, you look at it, we're looking at twenty-five, five, if we put it in the dog park, which I, I personally, either location is fine, but I think our better location is at the dog park.
We may want that public works area for future stuff down the road. We don't know that at this point.
Yep, I agree. And I also, I, then we keep people out of the public works area.
And when it's locked, we don't have to worry about them complaining that they can't get into it. I, I'd go with the dog park.
Yeah, so that's probably the, the bigger consideration there is, do we want it to be open completely for the public to use, or do we want to have some of that, like, monitoring of what's going on? Because in the compost site, there would be that monitoring. Um, they wouldn't have access outside of those open hours.
We don't monitor the dog park.
Right, and that's what I mean.
And they're very respectful.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, the most we have is PD driving around, looking at the dogs running all over the dog park.
Jimmy, is it, is that kind of what you're looking at, those numbers?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we can save some money by doing a berm or something like that instead of a backstop, you know, that would be, would be probably ideal, but. Oh, I, where are you seeing the money for the twenty-five?
Yeah, the forty-five hundred and the nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
Nineteen is the, is the, um, total.
Oh, is that the total? Okay, I, my bad. I, I was thinking you had to add those two. I'm sorry.
So it's nineteen or fourteen, fine. So we'd save forty-five hundred if we went by the compost, but I agree with you. I think the, the better location is definitely gonna be down by the, the dog park. Yeah, asphalt parking. Yeah.
Is there a reason why you, that you recommend greater than ten feet for the fence?
Um, it was mostly just for meeting what the fence is at the, um, compost site. And then I'm having that over at the space just so it's, it's a tennis height.
One of the things that a ten-foot fence will re, will create will be for the city to do a condition use permit. Anything over six feet would require that. So if it's not required for any kind of legal safety reasons, I would probably recommend, and we could reduce some of that cost with a six-foot fence.
Yeah, it really was just kind of on, it, it seems to be the standard of the ones that are enclosed, but I didn't see anywhere that it says it's required.
Or maybe like perhaps you say like a berm or some, something. I mean, it is a benefit that it is up to a wetland, right? On the other side there, and I don't know if there's any requirements, Jason, that we stay away from that so far, so we don't have people going in that, so. Just given the geographic area, probably a six-foot fence would probably be sufficient.
People swimming in a wetland.
What would it have to be made out of though? Wood? Right, like type wood privacy fence?
No, it could be chain link.
It could be chain link.
You can fling an arrow right through a chain link fence.
It's not, it's not for the arrows. It's for keeping people out of it.
Right, but there's possibility of a stray arrow going through a chain link fence and.
So that's where, yeah, that's where the backstop comes in. So, um, the, the recommended basis, yeah, having a chain link.
But I mean, on the, someone pulls the left and goes through the fence instead of going straight into the backstop, it might hit a BMXer there at a national event, or, I'm saying.
Somebody's dog.
Is there netting or anything on that chain link fence to stop an arrow?
So that would be if we wanted to put, because you can extend the backstop, because it is mostly just that netting. So we could extend the netting if we did put up a fence to line the fence wherever we thought it was a danger zone.
I mean, you, you would.
I think the only area we should be worried about is be the
You would hope, you would hope Councilman Collison that they're treating bows like they are animals.
You always have beginners. Ever been at a bolt landing?
Fair enough. As we all chuckled, fair enough. I won't say no more.
I'm just.
Anything possible.
You're not always gonna have someone there. They may think they're being responsible, but they're just green, you know, they're new at it.
So the three things that I just need kind of to move forward is one, do we want to move forward? Um, to which location do you want me to move forward with? I'm kind of getting a full proposal together. And then are there any other safety concerns that we should consider?
I think Councilman Collison has a justified safety concern. I personally think we should go at the dog park and I think we should go forward.
I agree, and I think if.
Maybe there's something you can drape over a six-foot chain link fence. I don't know. See what other ranges do. You know, they sometimes put like the la, I don't know what the word is.
Plaque, it's the plastic lattice slide.
Yeah, right, that goes in between them. I can't imagine that would cost a fortune or anything to do that.
Is that gonna be durable enough to stop an arrow?
It's gonna slow down. It's sort of deflected. I don't know.
It might deflect it enough that it, I think it would.
We're making an effort by doing something more than just chain link fence.
And I think if they dropped, you know, I think ten-foot high fence, I think it almost likes doubling cost versus something like six-foot. So we could save that money and go to the slat, go to six-foot high, put the slats in it. Um, my only concern is it's easier to climb a six-foot fence than it is a ten-foot fence.
Yeah.
That would be my only concern. But then again, if you're that dumb to do that, it's.
Well, it's gonna take you a minute, it's gonna take you a minute to do it. If somebody is shooting, they're gonna see you trying to get the fence. And you, you'll have signage on the outside of that fence. Yeah.
So I think.
Do not approach or whatever it would be worth.
Yeah, I agree. I think the dog park, look into dropping that to a six-foot fence and seeing them all putting slats in it. I can't believe if they even put those slats in there. I mean, I'll be honest with you, they're easy to put in. I'm done. Just slide in. You know, um, so I guess we look at that option as long as we're, you know, we say not to exceed brace.
Yeah, that, that's my one question on this, is the expectation that we'll take, undertake this work this year or that we would budget this then for twenty-twenty-two? I don't think that, that this, the dollar amounts we're talking about, I don't think either is, you know, is not really a
If you budget.
Not a prohibitive, but if we're gonna do it this year, we'd need to come, I would need at some point before the end of the year, come back for the budget amendment, allocate that fund.
If you budget for twenty-twenty-two, Public Works is probably gonna have more fill to use by then for a backstop.
Yeah, we, we would be able to filter or screen more, uh, street sweepings, yeah, in the, in the fall.
No.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think, whether it's the council or Public Works or finance or anybody that's planning for any, I don't think that's a bad idea at all. I think we're gearing, we know what we're going for, we're gearing to do it. Uh, I, I think Councilman Gordon had a great idea, but now I, you know, hey, let's do it, but let's, let's plan, let's gear and let's do it.
I think, I think if this was something that came up this spring, I think we could be possibly looking at having it done yet this fall. This is something that's not gonna, I don't think it'd be done in time for this fall, I, anyway, so I think it'd be pushed into budgeting for twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, I'd like to see us wait and, and budget for it.
Yeah.
I don't think planning is a bad idea at all.
Mr. Sylvester, do we still have fencing that we saved from that we took out, chain link from somewhere? Isn't that housed over at the shop somewhere?
I want to say we have some fencing behind the salt shed, but I think that was like really tall, um, someone that came from Mattson Tennis Court and someone came from the hockey rink. We took down the hockey rink. We still have some of that fencing. It was around the, the ends of the hockey rink. I think that's back there.
Might be something to also explore, see what we have over there, because if we're gonna put those little
Slats.
Slats through there, it doesn't matter, maybe if it's not the best, brand-new, fancy, shiny chain link.
Well, you could always.
Could see what's over there, because I feel like we have a couple rolls of something back over there.
Because you could put that behind the berm, that ten-foot stuff, if you have it, and don't have a use for it, put it behind the berm.
Yeah, if a guy had to shorten it up, it's not hard to shorten a ten-foot fence if you wanted it to be six.
Right, yeah.
I think we need to look into that, and I mean.
We had to purchase some fence, but not the whole fence, I mean.
See what happens when you plan. Now Chelsea's starting to think of things, next thing you know, you're gonna think of something.
Yeah, we can look and see how much is out there.
I agree.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Or you could contact Hoyt, see if he'll give you a donation.
Yeah.
Matthews give you its donation for fencing or something. Yeah, right. Sponsor.
All right, we'll move on to E five, the North Sixty-five Teamer of Com- Commerz Collaboration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, short and sweet, I was at a chamber board meeting. We had some discussions. Pure Athlete Golden, update them on what's going on in the city and, um, what are some partnerships that we can, um, that we can have. And one of the things I had asked is, is the chamber doing anything to support, um, our new Olympian that we have going to the Olympics? And I said, no, I haven't thought of that yet. And I had mentioned that, um, I saw a sign at Cambridge, I mean, not Cambridge, at QuickTrip that had said something like, you know, congratulations, great song, good luck, best wishes, or something like that. I don't, I don't remember what it said. And so we talked, we talked about that and, um, I put a very, very, very rough draft in your packet as to something that we could do. And I was wondering if that was something the city would be interested. The chamber said that they would print the signs, I'm thinking eight and a half by eleven. We put the signs on in business doors or windows just to show our support for her going to the Olympics. I mean, she is kind of putting Isanti on the map, so I think it's important to show, um, that we support her in her efforts. Um, so the chamber, and again, it's a very rough draft, we'll do something else, but would have the Isanti logo on it and then it would have the chamber logo on it. And so we would do our businesses and then they'll, they'll probably reach out to Cambridge businesses as well. Because I'm part of the chamber and she's part of that area, so.
I think that's a swell idea.
I think it's a great idea. Matter of fact, some of them.
Even if they could print us a, I don't know if she's got a picture of her, like a poster-sized picture of her, that we could hang like on the liquor store door or.
Now, if you were her, would you want that posted all over the place?
At the liquor store.
Well, you, you have to, I don't know, I would imagine we have to get her permission anyway for anything we post.
Permission to use, well, I don't, not to say congratulations.
I'm just, I'm thinking a city building.
We don't need.
The liquor store?
Permission for that, but if it were, yeah, a poster of her or something like that.
Somewhere.
But if we're just saying her name, congratulations, we support you, I couldn't be to win any.
I, I would, I've looked for that sign everywhere I went. And that would catch my eye just with the Olympic.
Symbols.
Symbols on there.
Funny, funny story is, one of the people that played softball up at Cambridge for, at Samquist, one of the gals coached her when she was little.
Never thought she'd be an Olympian, did she?
No. So it's kind of, it's kind of interesting. I mean, it's touched a lot of people in that, in that aspect. She was homeschooled, so she didn't go through the public school, but people do know her, so. Yeah, I, I'm for doing something with the chamber. I don't know dollar amount what we were talking.
I don't actually, the chamber said that they would print them, so really, it's, we're not going to have any. It'd just be staff time going to businesses, asking, do you want to hang this up? Um, and then just having her logo on it. I wanted to get your permission to do that.
Let's do another Wednesday, I'll help.
I'm assuming she already left, because it starts Friday.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah, it starts Friday, so.
It would have been nice to have gave her an escort out of the county, I think.
I don't, she hasn't lived here.
She doesn't live in the.
She hasn't lived here. I mean, she does live here, she's from here, but she's been living out west, training. So she hasn't, she hasn't.
Her family's still here, though.
Yeah, her family's still here. But she. Her escort, you would have to drive to California to escort her.
The family would see it. They're gonna let her know.
And I mean, and everything that I've seen when I was watching some of the Olympic trials, they always say, I stand, I stand not home here, you know, they say, I stand.
Yep, they go by their birthplace.
Yeah, so it's, I think it's important to recognize her and then also, I didn't say it, but it'll capitalize on her success, I mean.
You know, something that we could, something else that they could maybe put on that is find out when she is uh, perform, I want to, I want to say performing, but when she's competing, would be maybe tuned to, you know, Channel Eleven if that's what it's on. At Tuesday at six PM or whatever, that wouldn't be a bad idea so that people can say, hey, I know she's, she's competing at that time.
Well, they'd probably do the same thing I did and I'm just gonna find out.
No, you just, it shows more interest from us. And I think the chamber would probably agree with that at that point.
The added item by Councilman Lundin was a carnival discussion. E six, take her away, Councilman Lundin.
So, and with my job, I drive all over smaller cities, through bigger cities. Blaine every year has a carnival right there in the corner of sixty-five and six-ten. I think they do that every Fourth of July. Uh, I went through Rockford. I couldn't think of the name of the town. That's the name of that town, Rockford, I went through.
Robbinsdale does it too.
Yeah, I drove through there and they had them all set up Thursday afternoon. They were setting it up. I'm wondering if we can't at least entertain the thought to look to see what it would cost to have it incorporated with, say, our first street dance, our last street dance, or one of the street dances.
What's that entail?
You know, what is that, you know?
Grand opening of the Bluebird Park.
Yeah.
At the theater.
Yep.
So typically with a carnival, you hire an amusement company. So it's bringing in a third party to produce the carnival for you. And then you attach to it with like local volunteers or somebody to run it, um, local like waste services, stuff like that. So, um, I can certainly look into costs and see, get a general idea of what that.
I mean, it's not like you have enough to do already, so why not?
I mean, we're heading out of summer now, got a little bit.
I mean, it's not something that would happen this year, so I mean, we got time to look into what it would cost to do and possibly maybe bring in some business sponsorships. You know, uh, my thought was, say, Jimmy's. Huh?
Petting Zoo.
Yeah, uh, like Jimmy's Pizza's got his trailer out there. If you're a local business vendor, far as I'm concerned, give you your vendor's license for that, to have your food service there, as long as you're local. You know, that'd be the only stipulation I would put on that, is as long as you're within Cambridge-Izzy area. I suppose you'd have to say Bethel too, but, um, something very local. And that helps support them a little bit. I mean, last year, I think a lot of these carnivals and these food service trucks took a big beating. And I had, and I see them hauling those things up and down the road every single day, so they're going from place to place to place trying to recoup a lot of their losses. I mean, uh, just for example, Sweet Martha's Cookies lost over two million dollars last year because of not having been able to fare. That is the only time she's open, is at the fair, state fair. That's, I, you know, more power to her to make more money, I, 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 but I, still, it's a hit on a business. And, and I think by doing something like this would maybe help show some support to some of these people. So even, I think there, there used to be a local carnival company in the area, but that was, I'm old, so please forgive me, that's many years ago that I seen that they had that set up, that where they were storing, that was actually over, uh, just so, uh, east of the Green Barn, back in there. They may not even be around anymore, I don't know, but I mean, there's gotta be some other local uh, carnival companies.
Yeah, there are multiple that do, um, Midwest region too. So there's, there's some that are sitting in Minnesota, there are some in Wisconsin.
I mean, I just, I just, I think, let's, let's look at an option as a, something for another community event, and I think we tie it into a street dance. Because there's a lot of kids that come here, that come to this street dance and they're just running around, they ain't doing anything. And if it gives them something to do and the parents can enjoy whatever and it gives them someplace to roam around a little bit. I mean, I don't think we need to be a state fair carnival, but something just, some rides and like Dan said, uh, petting zoo kind of thing and.
The North Branch does that every year for their, um, is it their?
Yep.
Dan, what is that called? Fall Fest, yeah, I don't know what it's called.
Is it, does one as well?
They have a small carnival.
Yep, I don't think.
Saint Francis does one for their, um, I forget what they call.
Yeah, I forget what all these are called. I, for some reason, I can remember what Robbinsdale, but.
Pioneer Days, yes.
Pioneer.
I should, I should remember that, but, yeah. Is North Branch Kai Sai Saga Days or is that somewhere else?
I don't remember what they call North Branches.
There is a Shishago Day, I can't even.
Yeah, there's a Songo has one too.
They have one too, though.
They have one coming up. Stacy has one.
Is that what Stacy's is called?
August, they have one in Stacy, August sixth, because I just drove by the sign yesterday. And it's, they called it something, I, if I can see what it's called, uh.
The one in North Branch was just packed this year.
Yep. Uh, there was a guy in town that had a business that. Uh, there was a guy in town that had a business that was called KDG, KDJ Signs, Ken Drilling. He had, when he was alive, he was working on a project with the Chamber of Commerce. And he reached out to me and, and I, I, I'm terrible, I'd like to help as much as I can with things, but I'm so busy, I'll, half the time, I don't, I can't do it. But he wanted to tie it in with Izani's Heritage, because Izani actually was a way, a substation for potatoes, believe it or not. And they wanted, they came up with a Potato Fest, because Izani, they used to process potatoes here. And I remember when I was a little kid, we used to bring potatoes over where Federated is, there used to be a good part of the greenery and stuff, we used to bring potatoes and stuff there.
Isn't that old building down by, Oklahoma's Woodshop also, something like that?
It could have been. It, it, there was. Yeah, because they would bring it down there because I didn't think they had a rail, they couldn't get on a rail there. There was all kinds of things. So that was his, was his plan, but as people want to volunteer and help, they don't get everybody to help, so they la, they la, they lacked a oomph to get it pushed through. So Izani does have that, if you, you know, if you were to get ahold of somebody from the Historical Society, Izani was a big thing into potatoes.
Izani Spud Days.
Yep.
Yeah. Is there?
Spud Fest, but.
Potato Days.
Yeah.
Potato cannon contests.
Yeah, something.
And you, and also, do you, do you know how Izani got its name?
Yeah, it's off of a Native American tribe.
It was the chief of the Indian tribe.
Santi Indians.
Yep, that's how it got its name. And then down on County Road Nine, the first farm on the left, it's all, it looks really plush and all, there's a field, and then there's the row pine trees and that farm that was there. There was a family that lived there and they, when she, with the mother, she's passed away now, but when she was a little kid, the Indians used to go there and use their, their whetstone, or their stone that you would pedal to sharp, they would sharpen their knives and axes and, and stuff. And they would all go down and hide in the, in the potato cellar when they showed up. She, I, I was fortunate enough to hear her stories of that when she was younger, so. So I mean, Izani's got quite a bit of heritage to it, other than Cambridge, and I just feel Cambridge lost a lot of things to them. Back in the day, they used to have the Swedish Festival Parade. That was a big thing when I was growing up. It was a huge thing. That parade was huge. Why it ever went away, I don't know. Then I also, they also had a Snowflake Parade or something, they called it. Do they still have that? I mean, they used to do a lot of things like that. They lost a lot of that. And I, I'd sure like to see Izani get put on that map before Cambridge decides they want to start doing that. I mean, I really, I mean, let's, let's make Izani a destination.
Izani does have Jubilee Days.
They have the Jubilee.
Cambridge has Snowflake Days. I mean, do we want to add another festival? Or do we want to just rename Jubilee Days?
No, Jubilee Days is sacred, that's, don't get shot doing that. I just think it's something that gives.
What's Ju, what's the meaning behind Jubilee?
That goes way back and you'd have to talk to them at the, they're way back in the Chamber. Because it just used to be called Rodeo Days, originally.
I didn't do my homework there, but I did on how Izani got its name, that's how I knew that. I wrote an article on it, actually.
Actually, I did a report on that when I was in elementary school. But it used to be called Rodeo Days. And I don't remember when it changed to Jubilee Days.
I don't either. I know a lot of people still call it Rodeo Days, I still do.
They still do, it always will be, but I, I, I don't think we're really adding anything. I think we're just, if we push some of this towards the fall time, because that's when all, everything is warmed down and, you know, like our last street dance would be a great time to do that.
Here, here's, here's my, kind of piggybacking your carnival, but a little food for thought is, what can we do for the teenage kids in the city? There's got to be something we can do to keep them kids busy. Then the chief doesn't have to visit them, or his guys don't have to visit them as often.
So carnivals are a really good way to keep teens occupied.
Well, there you go.
They get dropped off, or they, they drive over there, but it's a space where they're old enough to be able to go and do those things.
So that, that's my point that I'm getting at, is the more things we can gear for our high school teenage age, I'm more powered to it, I'm all about.
You go to the county fairs.
Let's give them something to do.
Go to, when you, when I've gone to the county fairs, you walk around the game and rides is 90% teenagers.
Look at our street dances. I mean, if you were just at the last street dance, they're everywhere there. I mean, both, both of them so far. Alyssa can attest for that, we, we were both there, I mean, Josie was just at the last one, I saw Josie. A lot of young people at them. I mean, I, I think it's, the more we can get for our high school slash teenage age kids to marry her. So if it's a carnival, if it's a street dance, if it's, I'm all for it.
The old liquor store could turn into an arcade game.
Dan?
Collison's Arcade. It could be your business.
Collison's Arcade. They used to have an arcade in town.
Uh, wasn't that Pizza?
No, there wasn't a regular arcade. Matter of fact, I think it was over on Main Street. There was an arcade. Matter of fact, it was in my dad's old building, which is an empty lot right now, between the Miller's Old Garage.
That's a pretty tiny arcade.
No, it was.
Was it before the video store?
Yes. It was after, I think after my dad.
There was a video store in the town?
There was quite a few video stores.
Video rental store.
Wow.
Rent VHS tapes.
Yep, used to rent them over at the, where the laundromat is on Wagon Wheel Trail, or whatever the hell you want to call that thing. And then, then the, the other empty lot on Main Street in Dahlin, that was a video store for many years. Before that it became.
Yeah, I, I've been in there when that was a video store, it's right.
Yep, but there was one right on the corner, I think that's a photography shop now, right on the front, that used to be a video store. So, but yeah, there was an arcade that was in that building, our my dad's old building on Main Street.
We can get history lessons from Councilman Lundin later, if you wouldn't mind looking into that, Alyssa. Any other discussion we'd like to have?
I would like to bring up another thing, since we were, we're talking about events and planning and a lot of those things, they, they cost money and it comes down to a cost ultimately, I mean, it's time, but it's funding as well. And we, we're going to talk about this at budget discussions, but we might as well do it now since we have time, is where is the council's thought of where we do with the holiday light display and where we want to go? I know Alyssa's working on that, but right now, and you'll see, we don't have anything line itemed out in the budget for that. Is that something that we want to make sure that we have included? You want Mike to think about this before he talks about it in an hour and a half?
I think Mike had a good plan as far as that, when I, I thought, you know, we were going to have businesses by the lighting, yeah, yeah.
But do we, was the city going to pitch in some money for that first? Are we going to do, see what we can do for sponsorships for 2022? I just don't remember where that ended up.
Can we talk about us kind of putting the, the power out there for the displays, and then they would sponsor their own displays and?
They would sponsor their display and we'd light them up. We're supplying the, the power and.
Oh, this young lady right there has done some pretty big events. So she's going to have an idea of what we could or couldn't do with that.
Yeah, so there's a lot more to it, and there's a lot more cost that goes into it, if you're going to actually produce it as an event, instead of just, unless you're going to have just a free-for-all, people walking through with some lights up. Even with that, you have security concerns, you have, you know, waste receptacles and restrooms and stuff like that, so there are production costs that go into that. Where I'm at right now is I kind of have two different options. One is a very light option, one is an option that I think would bring other people into town. So really, you know, once we get to that presentation, I guess, point, would be, you know, deciding which route to go and what we really want it to be. But on the sponsorship side, yes, there's opportunity for sponsorship, but we still, regardless, I don't think we're, especially in the first year, that you're going to be able to manage all of your costs with sponsorship dollars. So I think the city would absolutely have to put some budget forward into it, especially for the initial costs, and then hope that in two years and five years, you're recouping all of your costs and, and getting some revenue.
If you had to shoot from the hip, and take a wild guess, what would that?
A minimum of a hundred thousand.
How much?
A hundred thousand.
But now, here's, here's part of that, too, is a certain council member put a bug in another certain mayor's ear to, to investigate this, and he made a contact with Bentleyville. And that guy said he'd give us all his lights. They change them out, what, every two years?
Every two years, they.
They, they work or not, they change them out. All we'd have to do is get the frames made.
It was theirs, what did he call them, the, oh, this is forty years ago now, you want me to remember that? They made those things out of iron.
Yeah, the, the, the.
Like a Santa Claus made of iron and then they put the lights around them.
They, it.
Like rebarbed.
Well, it's wire, it's, I, I, I had it in my name, but you said something.
Tencils I kept, or stencils I kept calling them. Yeah, we'll give them to you. I mean, we potentially just throw them away anyway, so, you know, every two years, we'll switch them out and we can send them to Izani.
Yeah, so if, with a partnership like that, if you don't have to pay for the displays, that obviously takes a significant chunk of those costs out of there. I mean, you're talking probably $60,000 worth of cost in just displays to have like an effective event.
Did you go to, what was that light? Me, you and Josie were.
Yeah, what was the name of that one? Sam's Christmas Town.
Did you go to that one?
Yep, I bet.
So they, I mean, they were taking dog kennels and making things out of them and, and.
Corn cribs.
Corn cribs and.
Just even dog panels, just.
We have a pretty creative guy in Public Works that I bet could make anything out of anything, and he's like MacGyver of Izani.
So you still do have material costs there, you still do have costs associated with putting those together, and then you have all the actual event production costs. So you have to have people running the event, whether that's, you know, five guys from Public Works coming out every Friday and Saturday night through December to do it, but there's going to be costs associated with that, there's going to be costs associated with safety concerns, traffic, all of that stuff logistically that comes into the event, and those costs add up very quickly.
Storage too.
Storage.
Um, Mayor Johnson had talked to metal cordons and they could make, they mentioned that they would even do those frames for us. At zero, zero to low cost.
Yep, so a great way to like start into it is to look at, one, business sponsorships, but also to look at business partnerships. So by partnering with like a Ziegler Cat to produce power, doing something like a fencing company to put up fencing so that you don't have to worry about security, stuff like that. So those are partnerships that can be built with that, that can be built into like sponsorship packages, instead of just purchasing, you know, a display with their name on it, they get that visibility and they're trading. So those are, there's a ton of options out there to be able to dial down those costs, but essentially like added space, like it's, it's very expensive to put on a, an event like.
So you're, what, what I'm gathering that you're saying is we're probably going to need to throw the bait out there in order for somebody to later on grab it and run with it.
See, my thought was, was to have like the Boy Scouts come out on, you know, this first week and the Girl Scouts and the Lions Club and, and different clubs taking over the weekends. Because I mean, it's not something I don't think we want to run all week long. You know, like Bentleyville doesn't open until, what, Thursday night, and then it goes till Sunday night, and then it's shut down till?
Thursday night again.
Thursday night again.
Um, I think Bentleyville is actually open all week.
Yeah, Bentleyville's open 24/7 now, darn near now.
Yeah, they've just got different, they've got different hours, Sunday through Thursday.
But I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't. I mean, I even seen local businesses put up the light show with the music, where you turn your radio to it, in individual homes that did that. I, I just can't. You know, I mean, I want it to be a walkthrough thing, I, and, you know, maybe the city can recoup some of the costs by, like Bentleyville, the city charges $5 per car, to park. You know, and the rest of it's all free on donations. So the city can recoup some of their money by charging that $5 per car.
If they don't park on the street.
If you.
Actually, it's the parking lot.
You recall Sam's Christmas, you had to not only pay to park, then you paid to get in there.
Yep.
And there were so many people there, they didn't even care what they were paying, they just paid just to go.
And that would be the easiest way, in my opinion, to recover those costs. If you have, especially if it's well enough done that you get outsiders to come in and want to come in, especially with it, you know, potentially being a brand new thing, and something that's closer than going to Bentleyville or going out to Wisconsin.
And if you recall going into that, that town, did you see one cop? Because I didn't.
No, I didn't either.
There was no traffic control, no cops.
It was all private property.
But it was a mess.
Yeah, there's traffic control once they get.
Yeah, traffic control, there was no town control.
Once you got in there. Yeah, once you got in there.
Once you got into the parking lot, because it was a private business, they had their staff parking cars and that was it. There was no officers out there directing traffic when you left, because it took an hour to get out of there.
Yeah.
It was a nightmare.
Get in there.
Yeah.
No, 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 two hours to get out.
Yep, so it.
I mean, it was tastefully done, but it.
What if you did a drive-through on, right through Bloober Park on that curvy road and it goes right through there?
Phelan Park did that, and that was.
Light displays on each side of the.
I went to that once in Phelan Park.
And it sucked. That's the last time I go again, they charged 20.
Oklahoma did one that I went through and it was, it was just amazing.
Phelan Park was, was sponsored by EWC Electrical Union.
Yeah, with some electricals.
It was electrical, it was electrical union workers, and it, 25 bucks to go through there, I wouldn't give you 50 cents, because it was, it, I didn't, I was not impressed with it one bit. Sam's Christmas Town was, was awesome.
It wasn't very good.
It wasn't very good. Sam's Christmas Town was awesome, Bentleyville's awesome. I, I, I just. I don't know, I think we, I think we need to get feelers out, see what we can get for sponsorships. And then Mayor Johnson still got his, all his other contact information and follow suit with that.
I'm going to have to blow the dust off of that.
I've got Nathan's info. I've worked with Nathan at Bentleyville, so I can connect with him, but I can start getting those feelers out there. Um, but ultimately, I mean, if we do move forward and for budget conversations, like we have to be prepared to put some money into it.
I knew we'd have to put something into it. Dollar amount, I didn't know yet for sure. I mean, I have no problem as a city, once we get this thing up and running, yeah, we're going, once we get it up and running, that's our initial cost, that's going to be our hit. The rest, I think we can make work with sponsorships. And we can always add here and there and whatever. I, I have no problem with us getting satellites out there for bathrooms and whatever. I mean, that, we can definitely work that into a budget mark number, that's not a problem, I don't think. And even in the satellite, uh, apps, is it Absolute? Is that what we use now?
Yep.
And he may even give us a discount for doing it as a sponsorship. You know?
I think we can get our trash service to sponsor. Our trash service or trash receptacles, I think they would sponsor and just possibly donate.
They probably would.
Yeah, so that's a lot of what we do in the cities, it, it's a lot of trade partnerships. So you, you dial back a lot of the cost because you get the, you give them recognition.
And they probably even give us the garbage cans and plus give us sponsorship.
Just how much, we got to say how much we want to take on? Three, three, four street dances a year, plus a carnival, plus the light show, plus Jubilee Days, which is mostly on the Chamber, but.
We don't do a lot for Jubilee Days, other than.
We do provide police officers.
That's, that's all I'm saying, is that's what we provide. We're not putting, we're not putting a larger number on something.
We provide Public Works, too.
From a budget-wise standpoint, which there was her main concern, how many events do we want to, the city wants to be involved with?
Well, I was con, uh, how do I, how can I, I, I was curious what we put out for Jubilee Days and the rodeo, and I actually asked Matt, and I asked the chief for numbers, and it's a lot less than you'd think. I was, I was shocked that it was as little as it was, I thought it was going to be much more.
But that can add up over four, five, six events over a year. That was just one event.
Yeah.
And that's just one part of the policing.
All I want is, is community events to potentially pull new businesses in or make their current ones flourish.
You got to think about the events that you want to have once the amphitheater's built. You know, so.
Now, are, are, you know, are we going to add, are we going to add events to that, or are we going to let somebody else add the events to it? Or you don't, you.
I'm just, I'm just.
I'm just, I'm just, what I'm saying is.
What's, in the future here, we're going to build that amphitheater, is the city going to want to be involved with any events that happen there? We should be, it's our amphitheater. I'm just saying we might not, might, might watch how many events we start adding here, because of staffing and cost.
Is there such a thing as too much for our community, Dan?
That the city pays for, yeah.
Well, yeah. I under.
Because we only have so much money to work with.
Right. Collins, as far as you're, what you're referring to, just those numbers I gave to the mayor, just between the parade, fireworks, kids' days, Jubilee Days, are added overtime costs for over $9,000.
What was it?
Over $9,000.
Over $9,000.
For just those events?
For just one event.
No.
No.
That's.
That was Thursday through Saturday.
Right.
So that was Jubilee Days.
Jubilee Days is one event.
Yeah, well, it was a parade, rodeo, but yeah.
Fireworks.
It's all, they're all separate. Fireworks, it's all, all separate.
I thought it was gonna be more.
But it's, to me, it's just Jubilee Days, to me, that's one event.
Well, you do, you do realize if you don't have things as a community event, people look at it saying, what wrong with that city, it's dull. But all of a sudden you see a community that's putting back, a city putting back into the community, people look at it and say, God, I want to be there. Now you're helping the developers, now you're helping the developers, the developers come here, the people build the houses here, your tax dollars are gonna start shrinking because the more properties that, that we bring in.
Yep, I understand all that.
But so I, I'm just looking at this.
Budget standpoint, how mu- much money do we want to spend on events for one entire year?
I see what both of you are saying.
You got a light show, she just mentioned a six-figure, six-dollar, six-figure amount for a light show. Okay, and then you add a carnival to that, I don't know what it costs to rent a carnival to come in and.
That's why the carnival is an idea to bring forward to see what it's costing. But just light, but the lights have been an issue for five years, it's been brought up for over five years.
But Steve, he's got a point, it's spend, 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 spend.
But now you brought up a carnival tonight.
I brought that up, I just said, I'd like to see what it would cost, I mean.
I'm just, I'm just saying what she had brought up, we need to probably prioritize.
I, I think that, and I didn't want to get off tangent too far, but I think that, uh, I just wanted to see what that appetite was for. Mr. Becker said that the place to discuss where we are gonna incorporate funding into a potential light show would be more into Fund nine twenty, which would be that capital improvement because it's more of an expense, so I think if we have Alyssa bring back things for August Cow, have some ideas, have some options for us to at least look at like the grand package, I, I do think that it makes a big difference. If you're going to charge patrons to come into your light show, you need to have a good light show, otherwise you're not gonna charge. And that, those are two very different types of light shows, I believe. So seeing her options come forward, I think will help us make those discussions and then we can weigh out, pick and choose what we want to do for events, maybe after we see that. I just kind of wanted to get the feelers out there, if this was something, cause it has been discussed numerous times, as you mentioned, if this is something we want to see next Christmas or holiday season of twenty twenty-two, we need to start making those just conversations now. Because it will sneak up on the city.
I don't think it hurts to get our ducks in a row, as I said earlier in this meeting.
Number wise to look at where we're going, that's my point I was getting across. You don't go look at a car and say, I'm gonna buy that car, and I turn around and tell you it's forty-eight thousand dollars.
No, forget it.
Then you can say, forget it.
I'm not saying I'm against it, I never said.
But that's what my point was, I'm not, I'm, we gotta look at numbers. I don't care, I don't, you, you could put all kinds of things in place, doesn't matter, if you don't have, the numbers aren't there, we're not gonna do it. I'm not, I'm not a.
I heard her say a number tonight.
She said up to, into, then we brought up getting free lights, that's going away, garbage service could possibly go away. You, you, you know, satellite service going away.
There's different directions, there's different ways, I mean, I, I'm not saying it could be, but I'm not saying it couldn't be done. Either way, but there's different options, I think it'd be a good idea, as I said earlier in this meeting, us to get our ducks in a row and plan for things is not a bad thing.
She's only one person who wants that.
And she.
Bad shell is built and stuff and you.
And she, she, well, she has an intern, but you know, uh, her and the intern can only do so much too, they're only two people. But.
So I'm saying.
I, I think, I think you're miss, I, I think you are, uh, what is the word I am looking for here?
Wanting to be prepared?
No, I think you're, you're misjudging her, cause I think she's gutsy enough to tell you she's had, got enough on her plate. And I think she would look at you right in your face and tell you that, if that was the case.
One event that she's ran probably would eat up.
This whole city.
This whole city in one time, one event, one event where she's putting a lot more time in than just looking into all these.
Right, we're talking more than one event.
Okay. I think we should just get, get.
Let's get our feelers out there at least.
And see what we're, what we're.
It's not hurting anything.
That's what I want to get.
Yeah, I'm, I've got some options together, so I'll kind of fine tune those for August Cow.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Anything else, any other discussions anybody would like to have? Anyone?
Feeler?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundine and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero, therefore this Cal meeting is adjourned.
Excuse me.